You still there, David?
See what we got? Yeah, I'm here if you can hear me.
We can. We're live.
I'm still, it's not even coming up on my phone, the meeting.
Oh, mine, it's online.
All right, well, we'll go ahead and get in. I don't see it, but, no, here we go. Yep, here we go. We're good.
Yeah, I'm here.
All right. So I guess we can get started our committee meetings this evening. We got three first readings, no second, third, or pending, and we're just gonna send it over to Mr. Cots. We got all three in your committee tonight. Jim, go ahead, take us away.
Fantastic. We will open our committee meeting at 6:05. Our first resolution is 21R01. A resolution authorizing New Franklin to apply for a fiscal year 2020 assistance to firefighters grant for the purchase of 20 complete assemblies, ensembles of structural firefighting gear, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. And this is a grant for approximately $68,000. If the grant is awarded, our matching chair share will be $3,414. Then we'll pay $795 to Gatchel Grant to write the application, and if it's awarded, we'll pay them another $3,500 for getting the grant for us. And I believe we have someone here that wants to tell us all about complete ensembles of structure, structural firefighting gear. Take it away.
Why, thank you, Mr. Cots. Yeah, this, this grant we're requesting authorization for is for 20 sets of the structural firefighting gear. The firefighting gear has a 10-year life per NFPA standards. So we have total, we tried to maintain 30 members, 30 sets. We have so far replaced 10 of those on our cycle. It come back around, the timing was right, so we wanted to try to take advantage of and apply for the remaining 20 sets that we have, and that's why we're asking for authorization to do so.
Fantastic. Now, now, the ensembles for structural firefighting gear, and of course, I know what it's all about, but for others, if you want to share kind of what this is, this, as I understand, is basically what you see firefighters wear on TV all the time with the full gear from helmet down to the boots.
That is correct. It would be from head to toe minus the breathing apparatus that you see with a tank and the mask, but other than that, head to toe, yes, sir.
Okay, and, and we need 30 of these. We currently have 10 new ones, and...
Right, but we, we try to maintain a roster of 30 personnel, so obviously, we always try to maintain that standard to have all the fire gear within that standard. And we have so far replaced 10 sets, so that remained 20 sets that we had to get, so we wanted to take advantage of it and try to get it under the grant, obviously, rather than put the bill for the entire amount.
Right, so all said and done, we're looking at about 42, $70, $7,700 is what it's going to cost us approximately for these 20 sets of gear for firefighters versus the 70,000, almost 70,000 that would cost if we were to purchase them separately. So I think this fantastic grant, and it's going to save the city a lot, a lot of money and keep our firefighters safe, which is, you know, what we want, obviously.
Absolutely.
Do you have questions or comments? All right, then, again, this is just asking to apply for the grant, so we will ask to waive the three readings on it, so we can move forward with getting the application in, and good luck to the fire department, and hopefully, we can, we can make this happen.
Thank you.
Our next resolution is 21R02. A resolution authorizing New Franklin to advertise for bids and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. And this is a continuation of what we did in September of last year, where we received a grant for $565,000, something like that, for purchase of a new pumper truck. And so now, now we're at the phase where we're going to start looking for bids, trying to get bids and select a truck that fits everything that we need and the price that we need. Go ahead, what, what, what else do you want to share for us?
Wow, you, you said pretty much all of it right there, yes. This, we're now to the point, the Truck Committee, we've narrowed it down, and we are really close, and we're to the point, we need authorization to start requesting the bids for the truck. As you said, the total amount was $556,000, also huge. This is now the second fire truck we've received under the AFG grant, which for small departments like us, it's, it's, it's been amazing. So the feds are gonna pay $529,523 of that. Our required amount is $26,476, so once again, that's getting quite a bit of bang for our buck for a truck, and it is a 1984, and it's, it's served us well, but it's also very tired, and it's nowhere close to the current standards, so.
Right. And, and if everyone remembers when Chief Leslie talked about this back in September, he did mention about putting together a committee of our seasoned firefighters to come up with, with the specs and the equipment that we wanted or needed on, on the truck to make it effective for our departments, and that's what you were a part of, correct?
Yeah, absolutely, yes, sir. I, I am the chair of the group. We tried to integrate senior men, as well as some newer members also, just to get them used to the process and see how the whole process worked, and it's, it's worked out real well. We're real pleased, and we're, we're feeling really good that we're ready to go for bids.
Fantastic, and we're still on track for late summer, probably, to have it in service.
Well, the, the sooner we're able to get the process started, the bid, or the build process, once it's awarded, it, it can take up to 10 months, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be fall, late, late, late this year, early fall, late this year, before we get it through the door.
And I'll have floor models we can grab.
No, that's not available.
All right, questions, comments, anybody?
No, I think to get a half a million dollar truck for $26,000, $27,000 is pretty incredible, you know.
I like the way you think, Mr. Fetterman, I agree.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty fantastic, and as you mentioned, being able to, to get two trucks through, through grants is, you know, I, I think it shows a commitment to, to our firefighters and the people, Adam and Leland, that work towards finding these grants and, and getting these grants for us, so.
Absolutely.
Congratulations to all of you, and, and, and absolutely, we should waive the three on this, if, if everybody's comfortable with that, so we can move forward with the, the bid process. Again, it's just getting the bids. Any other comments? Questions? Moving on. Resolution 21R02. I'm sorry?
I said, well done, thank you, Tim.
Thank you, thank you.
A resolution authorizing the transfer funds within the local coronavirus relief fund and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. Again, this is Resolution 21R03, and this is moving money from the dispatch salaries to contractual within the services and charges within the fund. $27,677.63, and who's gonna raise their hand to talk about this one?
Well, I can, I can, or the mayor.
Yeah, no, I'd be happy to. We allocated of the approximately $1.5 million of CARES funds. We had allocated 1.4 million towards payroll replacement and 100,000 towards other related COVID expenses. When, 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 when all of the dust settled on the, on the payroll, it came out to, instead of 1.4 million, it came out to 1.3 million, 900, take your pick. We were about 27, 28,000, about $30,000 short on the payroll. So we are going to transfer those funds over to the contractual, and we'll be able to then use those funds. It, the total actually be about 35,000 we'll end up with over there, because there's some left over already. We'll be able to use those funds for other CARES expenses that we incurred that, that we didn't include on the initial 100,000, because we thought we were gonna use the balance of it for payroll. Now, the good news for us, we are working under a deadline of January 31st to, to make sure those funds were spent, and, and we had, we had enough purchases that we could do that with, and poor Susan has been getting killed with this, I'll, I'll maybe talk more about that later. But the good news for us is when Congress passed the, what we'll call the Second CARES Act in the end of December, they extended the deadline for, for the use of those funds through calendar year 2021, so that approximately, let's call it $35,000. We have more time now. We'll, we'll either use it for expenses that we've already incurred, or we can consider some other COVID-related expenses. And what we may end up doing, you might remember that we ordered a pickup truck, and we're gonna use CARES money for that, and it turned out it wasn't gonna come off the line until April or so. We then were able to purchase the second pickup truck with CARES funds, and the, the numbers might be similar enough that we go ahead and use this, this money that we're switching, moving over to contractual for that second truck, so that we could purchase both those. We have two trucks for the Service Department with, with the CARES funds. So that decision hasn't been made. I'll be talking with Susan, and Susan, obviously, will lead us on that one, but, but for now, we need to transfer that money over to contractual, because we will not be using it for payroll. The Second CARES Act does not provide and authorize the use of those funds in that, in that new wave of funding for, for payroll, so we couldn't use it for those purposes in this calendar year if we wanted to.
And I'm sorry, did you mention a, a deadline on using this, or?
Well, it's the end of the year. We got through, now we got calendar year 2021 now.
Fantastic. Folks? Questions, comments? We'll ask to waive the three readings. We will close finance at 6:16. So while, while David's still trying to figure out his computer, and we've all had that, that issue, under Finance Committee.
My audio, okay?
Mr. Adamson, I, 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 I need some, some questions.
I'm not, Jim, I got, I'm not trying to figure out my computer.
Hey, David, your, the sound is real, real slow, real muffled. Your, the, the picture's frozen, and, and the sound is coming out really slow. Right now, not at all.
Okay, so, if I, if I may.
I'm not muted, but they can hear me.
So, Mr. Adamson, with the grant writing, I'm, I'm kind of, I, I guess, got, got some concerns about the amount of money we're spending, and the grants that we're getting, and we're, we're getting some great grants.
All right, I'm on my second laptop with my spec.
We're at, for, for the, the latest grant that we're applying for is $4,200 to Gatchel for, for the service. We have, we have Adam, that's kind of our fire grant coordinator, you described him during a previous meeting, as that, we have Leland, and, and it, it could be just my imagination, but it seems like the grants are seeing the huge majority of that are for the fire department. And, and really, I, I feel like we're, we're not seeing grants for other departments, whether it's service, whether it's parks, whether it's police, and again, I may be, you know, it's just off the top of my head feeling this way, and maybe way out of line, but I'm just wondering with, especially with Leland, is, is he searching? I, I, maybe I'm asking, what is his job? Is he searching for, for grants for us, trying to find them? Is that Gatchel's job, to track down grants, or are they just, once we locate one, do they just, you know, write it and, and do the administrative part of it? Or, you know, is... What, what's the benefit of having Gatchel and/or having Leland, I guess, is what I'm looking at?
Okay, the, I, I think you recall, there's, there's been a fair number of grants that have come in through police as well. The, the police radios, the bulletproof vests, any number of them, I'm sure Susan could recount a few more of them. So we've had a pretty good, well, there's been pretty good success there. I think part of it has to do, in, in response to your question, has to do where, where are these grants available? And, and there's a lot more availability in police and fire, and those are the two that we see most of. Nature Works, the LDNR, those types of grants, you know, there's, there's some availability there for, 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 for those aspects. For the Service Department, it's been a little tough finding grants, the, the availability of grants. The, Leland's function is to, is to, is to be the point man on, on grants, and that's, that's what he was hired to do, based upon his experience with the fire department. Now, Gatchel's part in this is, is long-running, and, and, Tim, can, can you speak to that at all? The relationship with Gatchel, and why, for instance, let's say, the fire truck? That was Leland's last big one, but Gatchel was involved in that one?
Yes.
Yeah, so, and, and they're, they're involved in a lot of them, and they, so, will you speak to that?
Yeah, Leland, I, I guess one thing that maybe to keep in mind is, Leland was here for all those years, and that may be a very good reason why the fire department has gotten the lion's share of the grants, because in his work and coordination with Gatchels, that's why we're still seeing some of the residual effects of that, where I, I don't know exactly how long he's been in his current place in the back there, but it may just require a little bit of time on his part to get acclimated and see exactly what all is available for all the different areas. I don't know, I don't know that. That's just my, my observation, that it would make sense, because obviously, he was very successful in the time that he was here and involved doing them in combination with Gatchel.
I, I, and I agree completely. He, he has been, and, and he's gotten a lot of, done a lot of great things for our fire department and to make that happen, and, Mr. Adamson, you're absolutely right about the police receiving grants, and as I was saying, it was, you know, just kind of off the top of my head, so I, I wasn't, you know, trying to miss them. I guess what I'm looking at is, is do we have someone that's dedicated to, to seek out or, or look for these grants that, that are out there, or do we just kind of, hey, I heard somebody else got a grant, let's see if we can get it, that type of thing, is it, you know, I don't know.
You know, I get it. I hear what you're saying. The, I, I want to speak just finally to the Gatchel's part. The grant, the, the grant application process is, is a, can be a, a really complex process. It's, it's a, it's a, it's, it's a, a, a craft, call it, you know, if not a profession. So for, for, just to use fire or police, the police will come across and say, hey, we got a bulletproof vest grant. They, they, they're aware that it exists, but to have the ability to put the grant application together is something else, and that's where Gatchel comes in. Now, in terms of shopping for grants, I think it's, I think it's a little bit of all of that. Part of it is, you know, Gatchel understands what we do. We've had, the Service Department has met with her, Brian has met with her a couple times, and said, listen, these are our needs, if you see anything out there, because that's what they do on, you know, five days a week. You know, the, part of it is word of mouth. We hear somebody got a grant, and hey, fine, can we plug into that one as well? And, you know, and, and some of it is, well, where the area of need is. We're in the process of trying to put together eventually a grant application to see if we could put a, a connection between Portage Lake State Park and the tow path. And so we're in the early stages, we're working with GPD on that, of, of a, a Nature Works grant for that purpose. I was gonna speak in a little bit here about the tennis, because we're, we're continuing to have discussions relative to the tennis courts, and we've, so we looked to, to the United States Tennis Association, and we got a lead on that, and they've got a, a grant program that's available that we're gonna be, so, and that's a pretty good example. What, 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 now I know this one exists, okay, Leland, here it is, okay? Now, we're gonna have a couple different point people on that one, but we're gonna, you know, he's gonna be involved in that process. At the same time, for that same project, we're gonna be going for a Nature Works grant, we anticipate, similar to what we tried to get for the pavilion a year ago, and, and we didn't get it. We'll be making a grant application with them this year for the tennis courts, once we know exactly, get a better picture of what those courts are gonna be. And that's an 80/20 grant, which would be gigantic. So, so with that one, we'll tell Leland, okay, you do the exploratory work, talk to Gatchels, see what it's gonna take to get us in place for that. And it's, so part of it has to do with where there's a, you know, it doesn't, at, at first, I wondered, hey, how come, you know, why police and fire all the time? How come service? Well, there's a lot of agencies out there, and there's a lot of federal money that want to help police and fire. And we don't have that, that doesn't exist to the same extent with service, but, so it's a little bit of amalgam of all those things, and we're always open to suggestion, too.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I can also tell you from experience how I've interacted with Leland when he's done in the past, mostly the fire grants, is basically, he's not only, he, Gatchel will write it, but he's kind of the point man. He, for example, he will, he will get together the quotes and the, and the information on what it is that we want to purchase for the grants, and then he works with Gatchel to get, you know, to coordinate, and then afterwards, he's the one that coordinates to make sure that we've, we've gotten the, what we were supposed to get in the grant, that it gets paid, and that we draw down, that we get the money back from, you know, wherever we're getting the grant from. He's always the one that takes care of making sure we get the drawdown, letting us know in the Finance Department that it's coming, and what it's for, and those kinds of things.
Okay, thank you, and, and just to clarify, it was, I wasn't trying to slam Leland at all. I, I was just looking to, you know, because I know he's done, again, a lot of wonderful things for us. I just want to make sure that, that we're, I guess, kind of covering all of our bases and, and being able to sneak out the grants, whether for tennis courts or, or Service Department, whatever, that, that somebody's out there and, and trying to find those things for us, rather than waiting for someone to come knock on our door, I guess, so, okay, thank you.
How you making out, David?
I'm good, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
All right, you ain't gonna see me, but you're gonna hear me. I've been on two computers, and I got people that know more about computers than most people that's sitting on this screen right now, and it's, our internet connection's been nothing but trouble. We're trying to get it taken care of, and nobody has any answers for it, so, anyhow, I'm doing the best I can, and if everybody can hear me, we can proceed. I've been listening to people, I just can't communicate, so. Little frustrated right now. So we all good? You can hear me, okay, everybody?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So we gonna continue, or we go with our committee? I was getting in and out on the last discussion about Gatchel and the police and fire and some stuff, so. If we're done with our committees, does there anybody else have anything for their committees? No? Can you hear me, everybody?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so no, nothing else in your committees, and go ahead and start a regular council meeting?
Yes.
Which I'm gonna call to order this Wednesday, January 20th, at 6:27. Like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Your new call, or, nevermind.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call, please, Kelly?
Mr. Cots?
Here.
Mr. Hargit?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Fetterman? Mr. Fetterman? You're on mute.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Hawke?
Here.
Ms. Norris?
Here.
Mr. Stock?
Here. I make you all present. Like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the organizational meeting of January 6, 2021.
Second.
You have a second? Any discussion on the minutes? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
All right, we'll move to make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular scheduled meeting of January 6, 2021.
Second.
You have a first and a second. Any discussion, questions on the minutes? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
All right, thank you, that passes seven to zero. Again, we have three first readings this evening, no second, third, or pending. We'll move into our first reading, Resolution Number 21-R-01, Kelly.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to apply for a fiscal year 2020 assistance to firefighters grant for the purchase of 20 complete ensembles of structural firefighting gear and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings of 21R01.
Second. Second.
We have a first and second to waive, roll call, please.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots? Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 21R01.
Second.
You have a first and second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms., Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots? Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
All right, thank you, that passes seven to zero. We'll move to Resolution Number 21-R-02, Kelly.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to advertise for bids and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on 21R02.
Second.
First and second, roll call, please.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 21R02.
Second.
You have a first and second, any discussion, questions on the motions? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero, thank you. Move to our last piece of legislation this evening, which is Resolution Number 21-R-03, Kelly.
A resolution authorizing the transfer of funds within the local coronavirus relief fund and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on 21R03.
Second.
We got a first and second, roll call, please.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 21R03.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero, thank you. That does take care of our legislation this evening. We're gonna be moving into the Mayor's Report, Paul. All right, that passes seven to zero. Thank you. That does take care of our legislation this evening. We're gonna be moving into the mayor's report. Paul?
You're muted.
You're on mute.
You're on mute, Paul.
I do my best work that way. The uh, uh, there, the water is moving its way up west casted uh, at pace, I think, that uh, that the Aqua folks are comfortable with. Um, they uh, the letters are going out to the uh, uh, property owners that are on that line, uh, advising them of, of cost, et cetera, and uh, we'll be posting something probably tomorrow uh, that will uh, uh, indicate some of what, what those anticipated costs are gonna be for those folks, and we'll be, be able to start to giving people an idea of uh, of going forward, what the cost will be, uh, if and when water comes to other parts of the city. So, we're excited about that, and then we'll get that information out, and uh, uh, and the water is making its way into ninety-three, so uh, it's a, you know, I was thinking on, I'm looking over here at this book that the whole grant application process, now it wouldn't surprise you that the, you know, what we got with that uh, that revolving loan fund, that principal forgiveness fund from the Ohio EPA was in effect a grant. Uh, and uh, the, the, the application on that one won't surprise you that it's like this. Uh, and uh, so, uh, but that, there, there comes the fruit of it, and, and we're gonna see it happen, and we're, we're excited. Um, along, uh, to that end, same uh, as we go forward, the, as you know, and, and I, I certainly appreciate, and I think the community should appreciate council support uh, for uh, for this water project. Um, it, it's never been about growth for the sake of growth. Uh, it, it is uh, it starts with finance, and it starts with, with the need to uh, to not uh, further uh, encumber people with property taxes, et cetera. We gotta generate some income tax. You folks know that. We've, we've presented that and, and to a lot of our business people and our Route ninety-three people a few months ago. Uh, and, and that's, that's what this whole process is all about, not, not seeing how quick we can build things out. But it's, you know, how can we, uh, how can we have the infrastructure that would support some managed growth? Well, to that end, we had, we had a number of people who, who said, hey, listen, we're interested. We don't wanna be green, and we wonder, you know, we'd like to be involved, and, and uh, we said, good. Uh, would you, how would you like to join the citizens advisory group? So, we uh, we published that, promoted that, and we had, uh, we've got twenty people that have, that have signed up. Uh, and it's a good cross-section of the community. Uh, I sent something out to them Monday, I think. Uh, let them know who they are, each other are, and told them we try to get an organizational meeting in, in a, in a few weeks. I will certainly keep counsel abreast of that, and when we get together, you know, when we try to get together for the first time, uh, I'll make sure you folks know all that, and of course, we want you involved uh, and, and to sit in on that to, you know, to the extent of your availability. And, and the purpose being to take a look historically where we are in this whole development thing. How does that uh, comprehensive plan from two thousand and four, how does that fit into today? Uh, it's a really a pretty simple story, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna take the time today to tell it, but the, the bottom line is, we, we, there's a pretty limited number of, of areas where, where we can have any type of uh, uh, commercial growth in it, within the next, in, in the short term, and by short term, I mean five to ten years. So, it's not like we got fifty places where would we like to do it. We got a pretty limited number. Uh, and that's what we, that's what we learned back in two thousand and four. So, we'll get this group together. I wanna share that historical information with them. Uh, give them some idea of what, you know, what's the, the short-term plans are, and listen, of course, uh, to what they're, you know, what the concerns are in the community, and I think we've got a, the, the people that we've got involved are the ones that others are gonna talk to, and uh, so I think it's gonna be a real healthy uh, uh, conversation, and I'm looking forward to getting together with that group, and I will keep everybody uh, posted as that continues to develop. Um, I did mention the tennis courts to you. Uh, the thinking right into the parks commission, uh, again, met um, last week, and uh, they're, they're fully, they fully support moving forward with the tennis court project. Uh, we have, I don't know, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that goes into the uh, parks fund, uh, that five percent of the income tax each year, and uh, and uh, maybe fifty thousand or so is, is fixed expenses, uh, fifty or sixty, and so there's, there's, you know, there's a balance of funds to use for capital projects. Uh, a lot of it has been used in the past for uh, baseball, football, and green space. Uh, and uh, and now they'd like to move into something that was actually in the plans for Sisler when the Sisler plans were first drawn. Uh, the tennis courts were in there, they, we, we, you know, we kinda took a run at that. Uh, talked to the U.S. Tennis Association back then, but it really just never got any leverage, and we weren't in a financial situation to do anything with it. So, it's being revisited. Uh, parks are, are excited about it. There's a lot of people in the community that are excited about it. Um, and uh, we are looking at uh, some land right there at Sisler that the school board owns right now. We've had conversations with the administration there, and, and they have a willingness to deed over some land to us, because they'd like to have tennis courts as well. Uh, and uh, so we're trying to figure out exactly where we want it, and get the land that we're gonna need. Uh, do the preliminary planning, and then shop this out with the U.S. Tennis and uh, with the ODNR, and uh, I, I believe the deadline on that one is in April, so we're gonna try to have a grant application in uh, by April, by the end of April. Uh, and, and we'll see how that develops, uh, but um, it, we, uh, it started as tennis courts, and, and at this point, we're talking about tennis courts and some pickleball courts as well. Uh, and um, as, as, well, you guys, you, you, you're starting to learn, if you don't already know, how, how popular those are. But it'd be a beautiful thing to have for the community if we can put that together, so I'll keep you posted in that regard. Um, the um, I wanted to say one other word on the cares funds. I mean, this was, I, I told, I, I, you know, I, I don't mean to beat this to death, but I, I did tell you that the documents that uh, that Susan had to submit to Summit County, and then to um, the Office of Budget Management at the state, hundreds of pages of documents, hundreds of pages of documents, and, and a tremendous amount of work that went into that. And it, you know, this, everybody's busy in their life, but we always know the year end is crazy busy time for uh, for the finance department. So, on top of, as crazy as that is, I mean, it's like work New Year's Day, that type of thing. Um, uh, there was this piled on as well. Uh, and uh, and it got done. And we're, we're finishing the last of it, the accounting aspect of it. Uh, you know, we'll carry over that little thirty thousand and wrap that up, but. So, you know, I was driving in here the other day, and I thought, man, that's an awful lot of work for somebody who's on salary. Uh, and doesn't get, uh, you know, some of the other, the other folks, the administrative staff, they're all on hourly, and, and they were able to be compensated through overtime as necessary, but Susan isn't. Uh, and uh, I took kind of a quick look at it, and it probably about a hundred hours or so uh, of overtime uh, went into this. And then I started thinking, if we didn't have Susan, what would we have to pay somebody to come in here and satisfy the record-keeping for one point five million dollars, essentially call it a grant? Uh, and uh, I thought, you know, ten dot thousand, fifteen thousand, I don't know what. Uh, we'd have to spend a lot of money. Uh, and, but she's here, she did it, she did it. Um, I, I was gonna say cheerfully even. Uh, she didn't fold under the pressure. Uh, and she got everything else done. Uh, so, uh, I, I'm, 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 I have some thoughts on that, and I'm telling you this now, first of all, to, to thank Susan once again. Secondly, to tell you, I'll have a resolution for you at our next meeting, and I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna suggest that we, that we compensate Susan in some dollar amount uh, in lieu of the fact that she can't, uh, she doesn't get overtime. Uh, and uh, we're talking about uh, one point five million dollars, so. Uh, I, I'm not asking you to commit to anything, and everybody's entitled to their own opinion on whether or not you should do that, but the seat I'm sitting in, it seems like the right thing to do, so. I will present something to you uh, two weeks from now. Um, finally, the COVID vaccine. We had a uh, conference call with uh, Governor Dewine this morning, and uh, it, it's not too much different from what you read in the paper. Uh, they feel that they do have a plan. The, the problem is they don't have the vaccine. Uh, and uh, I'm not gonna repeat all the aspects of the plan, but as you're aware, right now, it's for, they took care of the, the one A folks, uh, the first responders, uh, the nursing home people, the people in congregate living. Uh, and, and they're gonna move it next week into the one Bs, starting with the eighty, eighty-year-old and over. Uh, what uh, what the governor indicated was they had about a hundred thousand doses for that age group, and they got about four hundred thousand in that group that have indicated a desire to have the vaccine. Uh, so they, it will probably take three or four weeks to service that group before they get to the next group. Uh, and uh, so that, but, you know, it, it's now that we know it's here, everybody wants it right now, and I get that, but uh, you know, at least it's January and it's being dispensed, and uh, but it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a slow walk uh, getting through this. From an informational standpoint, one of the things I was curious about, and I was able to ask the governor this, uh, would, have they, based on these limited number of doses, are they accounting for that second dose that they tell you that you have to have uh, when they give you the first dose? And the answer to that was yes. Uh, those are earmarked. So, for instance, if he says he has a hundred thousand doses, that's two doses for each, you know, that's, that's a hundred thousand, for, you know, basically, it's two hundred thousand. So, those are set aside, and those folks that get the first dose, they will be able to come back in four weeks and get that second dose. It's already set aside. Uh, the other thing I asked him was, I don't know if you heard, but, well, I think over in, in, in uh, the UK, they're, they're, they're splitting these, and they're giving them a fifty percent dose instead of a, the hundred percent. And uh, they're not planning on doing that here in Ohio. All of this, I say, for informational purposes. I'm well aware, there's a lot of people that aren't interested in the vaccine at all, and I get that. Everybody's gotta choose their own path when it comes to that. But I wanted to share that, that additional information that came from the governor's office here this morning. Um, and that's all I got.
All right, thank you, Paul. Uh, finance, Susan?
Well, as you know, we're at, we're trying to finish up the end of this uh, twenty twenty and break us into twenty twenty-one. Um, I'm reviewing the reports now and trying to get that all cleared up. You should have it, um, hopefully this week. And um, we've got a lot of deadlines that come up the end of this month, beginning of February, so we're all running around uh, like, you know, chickens, uh, trying to get to meet all our deadlines and make sure that we uh, we get everything done that we need to get done. So, we're really busy, but if you need anything, please let us know. We'd be happy to help you. Um, but if we look a little flustered, it's just the norm for this time of year.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Susan. Any old business?
David, I, I have a question. I think it would be old business. I think Paul answered it tonight. He had mentioned at one of the meetings that we would probably be having some information about the cost on the water, and now I'm understanding that they are gonna get letters to the residents, and will there be um, information in the papers and online? I think he said it was gonna be on the uh, website for the cost, some of the cost for the water?
Yes, that's true. We're gonna put it out. Uh, we're preparing it right now. There's, uh, we'll have it uh, on the uh, on the website, on our Facebook page, uh, and then there'll be a separate webpage uh, dedicated just to water. Uh, and it'll basically explain it, and there's already, you know, there's, I know a lot of people are already conversing in this. Uh, there's a lot, you know, when they, it, it, it basically, whatever project they put in place, they figure out how many feet of the pipe they're putting down. They figure out how many residences are along that line, uh, and they come up with a lot fee of what it would be, you know, what it costs to get that line in front of your house. Then there's a separate component uh, to get the water from the line into your house. That's the line fee. Uh, and uh, uh, and then uh, if you have a well, uh, you either have to cap the well or crush the well, and there's a, there's a fee i- i- involved in that. There's also basically a registration fee with Aqua to uh, to sign on and do business with them, and, and that's the, as they explain it, that's designed to uh, um, to help their overhead costs of what it costs them to run their wells down there in Maslin and maintain the equipment to get it out here, et cetera. Uh, and, and then there's the water bill itself. Uh, so there's a break, those are the components. Um, the, the, the water bill, the well crushing fee, the line fee. Uh, these kind of things are, are pretty consistent. Uh, no matter where you're at in the project, the, the lot fee is a little different because it depends on how, you know, how many lots there are and, and, and what. Uh, so that's what's gonna fluctuate a little bit. Um, the uh, but there is financing available as well for, for most of those components, uh, anywhere from three to ten years, so that's a rough idea of it. Uh, we'll have specifics that we'll put out tomorrow. Uh, and I'm gonna put out the specifics that are in the letters. Uh, and then our, our webpage uh, will, will have that information on there as well, but then we're gonna, we're gonna have some additional information. Uh, so, for instance, because we've had community, we've had people reach out and say, hey, I'd like water on my street. Uh, and we're gonna try to give them a clearinghouse, a place for them to, to let us know that, so we can let Aqua know that. And, and the way it works in this water game, they need customers, and if they, there's a neighborhood with the, with a, you know, a, a majority of people who would like to have water, um, you know, they, they'll talk about getting water to those, to those areas. Um, so there's, uh, it's, we're at the, we're, you know, we're at the ground floor on this, but we will have dedicate, a dedicated page that will have that information, and we plan to have that up tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, any other old business?
I wanna bring up um, and ask about the COG and where are we at with that? Um, I'll let you into that first. I have something, I think, a second part to that as well, but.
Yeah, okay, and I probably should have reported. The uh, we had our first meeting uh, of the uh, South Summit Council of Governments um, on uh, uh, last Friday. Time flies when we're having fun. Uh, the, the COG is formed, it's acknowledged by the auditor. Uh, the executive board of the COG are the two mayors from uh, Green and New Franklin. Uh, the business that was transacted was uh, uh, authorizing uh, uh, engagement employment, uh, a, a contract with the dispatch manager. Uh, and that is gonna be a gentleman by the name of Kim Baldwin, who is a retired uh, uh, fire chief from Barbados. Uh, also engaging a consultant for, as a fiscal agent to set up the, the books, uh, the tax ID number and the account, and uh, all the things that have to be done to, to set up the finances for a city, so. Uh, that's moving forward as well. Uh, and uh, authorized then the dispatch, the, the dispatch, uh, the creation of the dispatch center. Uh, now, and the, and the way the bylaws are of the COG, the dispatch center has a separate board of directors, and that consists of the police chief and the fire chief from both communities. Now, since Green doesn't have a police chief, it, it includes a separate designee, so it's their, it's their fire chief and their fire captain. Uh, and uh, our police chief and our fire chief. And then the dispatch manager is the fifth person of that board of directors, and that's who will be responsible and charged basically with the uh, uh, with putting the uh, the, the dispatch center together and, and uh, uh, and then proceeding with uh, staffing it, and then get the lights on and get it running. Uh, there's arbitrary, probably the second quarter of this year, they expect to be operational. Whether it'll be April or May, you know, we don't know. It's, it's, you know, we, the idea is we're gonna keep this thing moving uh, at an appropriate pace, uh, and uh, and, and we'll get it ready to go as soon as we can get it ready to go. Uh, from the uh, finance standpoint, we are uh, the, the commitment, the, the cost sharing that was approved when, when, when the COG was approved by council uh, is sixty percent, is roughly sixty percent forty, sixty percent green to forty percent for New Franklin. Uh, and uh, and so there was a temporary, because it's a separate political entity, and that's an important piece, they have the same requirements that the city does as far as uh, approving a budget by March thirty-first uh, and doing appropriations and doing all the things that you folks do here with finance. So, there were temporary appropriations of two hundred thousand dollars uh, approved. It, we, it's anticipated it's gonna take about a million dollars, maybe one point two or so to run this on an annual basis. Uh, and uh, so that initial two hundred thousand dollars appropriations, each city is, is now being called on to fund uh, their proportionate share. A hundred of that is gonna be what the buy-in fee, fifty thousand dollars each city. And if there's, in, in the future, if other cities come in, they're gonna have that same buy-in fee, that fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the balance of the hundred thousand will be, will be funded, the sixty forty. So, we'll, we'll be responsible for forty thousand of that. Uh, the, the buy-in fee, that fifty thousand dollars is gonna be satisfied not just with cash, but also in-kind contributions. Because there's equipment that New Franklin has that is gonna become uh, it's gonna be owned by the COG. Likewise, Green will be bringing some of their equipment in. And so there's gonna have to be a valuation put on that in-kind contribution. We're in the process of working on that right now. We've got the list. Now, we gotta do the pricing. Uh, whatever that number is, let's say it's ten thousand dollars. Our fi- our fifty thousand dollar initial contribution will be forty thousand cash and ten thousand in kind. We don't know what that part of it is yet, but so that we can get fun- We don't know what that part of it is yet, but so that we can get funded and, and get a bank account open. We will, I will have, at, at two weeks from now, I'll have a resolution for you to approve that initial transfer of, or that initial expenditure of forty thousand dollars in some change to the South Summit COG as part of our initial contribution. Green introduced that yesterday at their meeting. I don't know if they're going extra readings on that or not, but theirs is for sixty thousand or so. So, and that's a lot, but I don't know if that answers, if that helps Mr. Federman? Or if you've got any more specific questions, I'd be happy to try to address them.
Yeah, so the second isn't so much a question as just a, has, has this been relayed down from leadership to the dispatchers? There may be some trepidation with some of them who may not know the details and there's a lot of uncertainty. And I just want to make sure that they all know what's happening since it involves their jobs.
No question. What we did, we wanted to wait until the, until that meeting on Friday, until we had those authorizations. And on Monday, the letters went out to, actually, we're a little bit ahead of Green. Chief Davidson, the board of directors had a meeting yesterday. And Chief Davidson indicated that he had started, he had distributed those letters on Monday, the eighteenth, to any of the dispatchers that were on duty. So they're all getting these letters. Basically, what the letters say, it explains what we're doing. And, and it's asking them to indicate interest. There we go. Are they, are they gonna be interested? And what we recited was, well, we explained that it's a totally separate entity. It's gotta have a federal ID number, separate management and staff. As a result, that the COG operates independently. And as a result, the merging of these services results in dissolution of the existing dispatch department. So both of these departments are gonna be dissolved. Although we anticipate most, if not all, current full-time employees will be offered employment with the COG. Some staff reductions may occur depending upon the interest of current dispatchers for employment and the number of positions available. Regarding compensation benefits and seniority, it's anticipated the pay scale and basic benefits currently in place in Green will be adopted. Those who transition will bring with them their service credit from their respective dispatch centers for purposes of pay scale, vacation, seniority. So, and then we asked them to indicate and do, you know, do they have an interest? We, we made it clear, this wasn't an offer of employment. Because we're really not in a position to be able to do that. Because one of the other things the COG is gonna have to do, and we're working on that right now, is adopt a policy manual as to how you, what are your hiring practices? And they have to meet the same requirements of merit and fitness that we do. And that COG has to separately advertise and hire. Now, the expectation is that you were gonna want people that are seasoned and that, that have worked at both departments. And, and so when we said we, you know, that it's anticipated that most, if not all, will be offered, that's accurate. And I think that's what's gonna end up being the composition of that department. So that's, that's how we're going forward on that.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
I have a couple of things. Basically, going back to Mr. Adamson, some of the things you mentioned this evening. Talking about watering in to ninety-three. Do we have any updates on the sewers coming down ninety-three? Not residential areas, not trying to start anything, but just the coming down ninety-three.
No, well, we're, it's, it's, we're in, I'd, I'd say pretty constant contact with Mike Vane, who is the head of the Summit County Sanitary Sewers now. And they continue to tell us that that first phase is still in process. The, that it hasn't, you know, they're moving forward on it. I think that one of the hangups was they, they needed some, to acquire some property for a pump station on Vanderhoof. They've done that. I think a lot of the engineering's been done. We spent some time over the last two weeks making sure that Aqua and, and, and sanitary sewers were on the same page in terms of what's going where. But the short answer for that, Mr. Cots, is that I still have every reason to believe, to me, I'm, I'm thinking two years. I'm, I'm, and I've, I tell them that every time I talk and that's pretty consistent with what they say. They don't wanna declare, but that, yeah, they're planning on that coming up ninety-three. And that's where it's, it's gonna come up Vanderhoof and it'll come into ninety-three and down to Grace. So I'm already talking to them about trying to get it beyond Grace, but that's a whole separate conversation. So that is still, that's still on, on schedule.
With the Parks Department, do we have any updates on Grill Park?
Well, only that it's, you know, we're not exactly sure what we wanna do out there. We thought about trying to put pickleball out there. And, and it's not to say even if we do some at Sisler that we can't do some of that out there as well. We cannot put a regulation baseball field out there. I think I probably shared that with you folks. So I think it's really gonna be a matter of just grooming for right now and, and, and see, you know, what, what people would like to see, you know, what, what can, you know, what would the community like to do? You know, and I, particularly that West Side community. So we talk about that with Parks, but we don't have any specific plans with it at this point in time, particularly since we weren't able to do the baseball. So that's, you know, that's a work in progress. We're just glad we got it. Because otherwise, it'd probably be houses sitting over there.
Right. Well, I think, I think we're all glad we have it and probably the residents out there are excited to have it. I just hate to see it kinda get put on the back burner when, you know, there, that side of town is looking for, for something. And we have the opportunity and I certainly would like to see that happen soon.
You know, that's a, and, and I'll tell you, that, that's, that's probably lends itself to another, to getting some input. I, I mean, and it's, it's not like every time we got a question, let's form a new group. But it probably wouldn't be a bad idea. Maybe I could talk with Mr. Federman particularly about to, see if we can get a little, a group together. And maybe we'll advertise that, I'll do, I'll do on one of our daily deals here. And see if we can get some interest from some folks out there who'd like to, to give us some input of what they'd like to see out there.
Well, I, I think you have enough on your plate. That should just solely fall on Mr. Federman's lap and let him deal with that.
Yeah, we enjoy it, we enjoy it. And Katie Smith does a great job on this too. So Katie, if you make a note on that and we'll, we'll, we'll get something on, on our website and our Facebook page in, within the next week or so. That's a good idea, Mr. Cots.
Thank you. Tennis courts, you mentioned getting grants and talking with, with different organizations. Since we're, we're possibly having the, the high school involved and, and I have absolutely no idea, I'm just throwing it out there. But would the Ohio High School Sports Associate, whatever, whoever they are, would there be any grants? Or, or would there be any participation from them to help promote a sport somewhere?
I haven't heard that that's a viable option. We had a meeting with the, the tennis coach from, from Manchester. He coaches the, the women's tennis team there. He also coaches a women's team at one of the, one of the colleges, I'm gonna say Ohio Wesleyan, I can't remember. But, and he's a pro out at Congress Lake, very knowledgeable guy, so enthusiastic about soccer. So we brainstormed with him about possible sources of funding. And, and we did talk about the USTA, but there's no indication that there's, that the OHSAA would have any money along those lines. I will tell you though, one of the things he suggested and we're gonna be following up on, I didn't mention in the earlier report, is donations. We think there may be people in the community that would like to see this happen. And so I, I talked to Katie about this today, that we may try to put together some type of a New Franklin tennis supporters or something like this. And, and because the last time around, there were some people that had an interest and, and that perhaps we're in a position to make a significant contribution. So, so we're gonna look at that as an additional piece, but I don't think the schools will have any money for us.
And then just two other things real quick. Spring is coming up, people are gonna be coming around and trying to knock on doors. So if you haven't already, sign up for the NOPEC, do not knock, do it now. So you, you know, you're in the process or you, you get it all squared away before people come knocking on your doors. And then Kelly, if, if you could, real quick, could you just say, I'm Batman?
Say what?
I'm Batman. Because you're, you're only showing like half your face and it's just like.
I'm sorry.
All right, thanks, everybody. Any other old business? Everybody can hear me now, my hit or miss internet seems to be okay now. This is not just the first and third Wednesday, this is pretty much our life and working with our internet provider and nobody has any real good answers why it's so hit and miss. So anyhow, we do have some technology and computers here, but we can't take care, control of our internet service. So, and by the way, my a hundred dollar antenna gets great TV for a one-time cost of a hundred dollars. So anyhow, just throwing that out there. Any new business? New business? All right, I do, we had a couple of comments, I'll read one of them. Actually, a question here. Is the COG expected to have a cost reduction benefit for New Franklin? Otherwise, why do it? And I think you've talked about that, but if you just wanna touch on that real quick, Paul?
Well, I think, I think at least at this point, we anticipate that it, that will, that it will not be, that there'll be no increase in expense, so that we'll be able to hold the line on expense. I think going forward, we're gonna see a benefit because we're not gonna be, we're, we're gonna be sharing the costs of technological improvements when we have to replace equipment, et cetera. We're not bearing a hundred percent of that cost. It's gonna save us money from, maybe most dramatically from a staffing standpoint. Because it's very difficult to staff dispatch and I will tell you, you can talk to any dispatch center and they'll tell you that. It's hard to find these folks that do this and it's particularly hard to find when you're the lowest paid. And we will now have a pay scale where I think, and when you don't have, when you can't attract, you, you end up with overtime and when you're paying overtime, you're spending money. So I think we, we expect it to be a, a cost savings. But as importantly, we expect it to be a, an improvement in, in the quality of service.
Paul, isn't it true also that this is gonna be mandated? It isn't something we just thought up on our own. This is something that actually is being mandated for us.
Right, they, they raised all the standards for primary PSAPS, Public Service Answering Points. So they raised all those standards and we made the initial bump, but to, but to, to stay at that level, it costs more money. So.
All right, thank you. I didn't see anything else. What was our, what was our viewership tonight? Katie, you gotta count on that by chance?
I've seen it around eighteen to twenty.
All right, good. Great, okay. Paul, executive session this evening?
No, sir.
All right, again, I will continue with my internet provider to try to get my stuff straightened out. I'm not sure what the problem is, but we'll get something worked out and I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second, on favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, we'll see you next council meeting, February third, twenty twenty-one. We'll start our committee at six and meeting following that. Thanks, everybody, and have a good night.
Thanks, everybody.